Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a joint meeting tonight here between the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Master Plan Committee. I believe we have representatives from all here. I don't know whether our forum is here, but I don't believe it's needed as we're not taking a vote. What we're going to be doing is looking at a comprehensive zoning plan that Anna is going to give a presentation on, our town planner. She's been tasked with kind of revamping this over the next year or so. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over for a quick roll call to other chairs of other boards, just so that they can announce themselves and their participants here. We do have a full Planning Board team here with the exception of one member, Adamar. But with that said, Dave is our alt net will become a voting member if there are any votes later on, which I don't foresee. So, Mr. Benevento?
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Rich Benevento, I am the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm here tonight with colleague Bill Renault. Say hi, Bill. Hi, Bill. There you go.
Very good. Mr. Cresta?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Brian Cresta, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. I called to order the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, and with us, I'd ask my fellow members, and I also sit as a member of the Master Plan Committee, but ask our fellow members to introduce themselves as well.
Hi, I'm Maria Pecos Hances on the Affordable Housing Trust along and representing the housing authority.
Jason Bernhard, Affordable Housing Trust and Planning Board.
Richard Gregorio, Finance Board and the Finance Board of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Very good. And who do we have here from the Master Plan Committee?
Yeah, Peter Moon couldn't make it, so I'm John Erickson, and I'm kind of filling in for him. He asked me to.
Excellent. Thanks, John.
Karen McCafferty, Master Plan Committee.
Amy Galishewski, Master Plan Committee.
Thank you. Now that the introductions are done, Anna, you want to take us through the presentation?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is fun to have a full table. I think this is the most people I've seen around it in my short time. So, I'm Anna Bury-Karmer. I started back in November, and the Planning Board in particular has been busy at the end of the year, so I'm really excited to have a couple minutes today to sort of introduce myself, talk through some of the Planning Department's priorities for the year, and introduce our comprehensive zoning bylaw update process. So, our plan for today is to keep it pretty high level. I'm going to do a general overview of our, like, the initiatives that we have, and then I'm going to go a bit into the types of zoning amendments that we might want to make and should make, review the process for updating zoning bylaws, go through our timeline and process for Middleton in particular, and then end with some of our amendments that are on deck for this year and for 2026. I also want to just say, as we get going, this might be things that some of you already know, this might be new information. I think I might be the newest one in the room, so that we all start on the same page. I'm really going to start with the basics. So, I'm going to kind of lay out the basics so that we all have a common kind of knowledge and starting point, especially as we, I expect to really get into kind of a lot of zoning details this year. So, just starting off with our upcoming initiatives, these are really what we're looking at, at least from my perspective right now. Things always come up, but I expect these are sort of our longer-term initiatives that we have on the pipeline. Route 114, we have both the northern spotlight on the northern corridor to take a look there, as well as sort of the ongoing look at the downtown Economic District. We're having a town center study for Middleton Town Center to take also kind of a closer look at that area. Comprehensive zoning bylaw review, which is what we'll be spending most of our time talking through tonight, but essentially, we're really looking at, that's kind of like a full look at the zoning bylaws. And then two plans that we have that are coming up for their updates. The Housing Production Plan runs for five years, so we have, it's about time to update ours for 2025 to 2029, and our comprehensive master plan update, and I'm expecting that that would kick off in 2026. I just wanted to put it here, so that's definitely on the radar. So, let's dive in to the zoning bylaws. First of all, why do we update our zoning bylaws? There's a couple reasons. One of them, I would say, start with number one on my slides, general upkeep for clarity, relevance, readability. This is a kind of update that you don't need to do all the time, but every once in a while, things get outdated, you need to take another look. Another reason would be to revise the bylaws to align with state and federal guidance. So, state and federal guidance changes, revise the bylaws to align with those changes. And then finally, you might be able, or might be wanting to introduce new zoning tools to support whatever priorities or goals that the town is looking at. That's kind of why we might want to do this. When we're talking about a comprehensive change, it really is helpful to separate the types of amendments into two categories, and I find it helpful to separate them based on the impact of the change. So, a technical change might be an update to a section that's outdated, maybe a reorganization of sections to follow a more logical order, and/or a consolidation of, you know, texts into one section, so you're not going around looking in several different sections for something that really makes sense to all be together. Technical changes do not affect the application of the bylaws. Really, they're just important to kind of keep things clean, readable, and usable. I've categorized other changes, all other changes, that are going to affect how the bylaws are applied as policy changes. So, there's still plenty of different types of policy changes, and I kind of wanted to break that down a little bit, too, because it's sort of a big category. So, a couple of the ones that I am finding to be really important to mention would be a procedural change. A procedural change might be streamlining procedures to better serve residents. So, say you want to change the way that the permit process goes, that might be a procedural change. A prescriptive change might be adopting a new zoning tool that doesn't currently exist in the bylaw to support a goal or a priority of the town. And then a restrictive change would be something that specifically regulates or restricts uses. One example that I will share around, I guess, to put these into some perspective, is the ADU bylaw is actually a good example of a prescriptive change. So, that was something that kind of came out of a desire to have different types of housing, and then it was like, okay, we want to have different types of housing, let's see how we might practically make that something that we could, you know, would be easier to implement, and then the zoning bylaw. So, that's one example of a prescriptive change. A couple of things to keep in mind when we're talking about zoning is, and this is where I get a little into my planner, my planner self, but really, zoning is biased towards uses present, when it was adopted. So, historically, towns adopted zoning based on what was happening already on the land. In most places, it was pretty much all residential. Eventually, some folks started businesses, and then it kind of became practical to separate those uses. That's like your brief, brief history of how zoning sort of became what it is today. And over time, I think that the focus has really shifted from that sort of more reactive approach into a more prescriptive approach, like I was mentioning. And so, thinking about it like that, thinking now folks are sitting around a table, like us, and really thinking, okay, where do we want our town to go? Where do we want to be in the future? And how can we use some of the zoning tools to actually help us reach those goals? So, say we know exactly what we want to do. How do we actually do it? How do we amend a zoning bylaw? In Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Constitution gives towns and cities authority to amend zoning bylaws as long as they do not conflict with state or federal laws. All changes to a zoning bylaw, either a minor housekeeping change or a major policy change and everything in between, they're required to follow due process, and the process doesn't change depending on what kind of change you're making. So, I'm going to walk through the steps of the process, and it might be familiar because we just walked through this with both the ADU bylaw and the MBTA overlay district. So, the first thing is that somehow the change to a bylaw is initiated. So, there are several groups who can initiate a bylaw change. It's not everyone, it's a few groups. The Select Board can, the Board of Appeals, our ZBA can, our Planning Board, a regional planning agency, a landowner who would be affected, and there are some definitions of exactly what affected is, but potentially affected by the area that would change, and a group of registered voters. So, once you have the initiation, the initiating group, if it's not the Select Board, has to submit the change to the Select Board. At that point, the Select Board must refer it to the Planning Board. The Planning Board is a group that will then take it on, and they do have a timeline for that, that has to be done within 14 days. So, when the Select Board receives that initiation, or if they initiate it themselves, they refer to the Planning Board. And then the Planning Board has to hold a public hearing. There's a public process, so they are required to hold a public hearing. They have 65 days to hold that hearing after they've received a referral, and either at or following that hearing, the Planning Board makes a positive or negative report, or they make no report, and that report is for us to town meeting, because town meeting is our legislative body. The town meeting vote must occur after the Planning Board report. Those things have to be, all this has to be in order. The vote, the one thing I'll note here, which is a little bit in the weeds, but I do think it's important, is that Planning Board vote, excuse me, the town meeting vote must occur after the Planning Board report, or after 21 days if the Planning Board made no report. So, there is a time designation on that as well. And then, I think we're familiar with the town meeting process, but the town meeting is a legislative body that has to vote to approve the bylaw change. Depending on the type of change, it requires either a two-thirds majority or a simple majority vote. After the town meeting vote, if the town meeting votes to approve the bylaw, then the bylaw is sent to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General has to review all changes to the zoning bylaw. The Attorney General's review is primarily to confirm that all the procedures were followed and that the bylaw doesn't conflict with any state or federal laws. I want to take a second and see if there are any questions on this process before I jump ahead. Nope. Cool. So, what does it look like for us? What does it look like in Middleton? Looks like that, but I do want to kind of walk us through our timeline. So, in order to follow the process for amending zoning, particularly when we're talking about things that are going to be more of public interest, so like a technical change might go to a hearing, and really, no one has any comments because it's not going to affect how the bylaws operate at all. But something that has a lot more public interest, that's going to affect how, you know, things operate, that is probably going to take more than one public hearing, and there might be also additional opportunities for feedback and engagement in that process. So, if we are, and if, I will say, I specifically am concerned about having a bylaw that makes sense and is correct for us and is really a good idea, I'm going to want to make sure that I get the most input as possible before I actually initiate the particular process I just walked through, because there's not a lot of room for error in that. So, I'm looking at our timeline and thinking, really, right now, this year, 2025, now through October, we're looking at getting ideas, getting a sense of what key changes might be, getting a sense of what kinds of things we're going to do so that we can hold some public meetings, discuss them, make sure we're getting all boards' input, and that would be setting us up to then go through the bylaw amendment process for the 2026 town meeting vote. So, there's quite a long lead time, especially for when you have it. It doesn't always happen like that, but ideally, when you can plan ahead, this is really helpful to be able to have, you know, plenty of time to really do outreach and engagement. The one other thing I will say as we're looking at the timeline, and I think it's kind of goes along with this, is sort of each board's role and the staff role also in this process. So, as you could see in sort of the formal amendment process, the Planning Board is the group that's required to hold a public hearing. However, many other boards have a lot of input on the types of issues that would then go to the Planning Board. So, really, a lot of our work, especially this year, is happening all before that initiation So, for our specific bylaw update, where we are right now, the Middleton current zoning code was adopted in 2005 and amended in 2008. Really, minimal updates have been made since then. In 2018, town meeting via a citizen's petition requested the formation of a zoning bylaw review committee. I think a few of you may have been on that committee, and they were tasked with identifying areas of inconsistency in the zoning bylaw and items that wouldn't withstand judicial review. So, this committee completed a zoning audit in 2022. And then in 2023, actually, town staff secured a grant funding, secured a grant to fund a comprehensive zoning review, which will encompass both technical and policy changes. And so, as part of my work, I will incorporate all the previous reviews that have been done into what we're doing right now for this process. So, what do we have on deck? What are we looking at? A mostly blank slide here is actually really good news for us. This is our 2025 list, and since I just went through that timeline, I did that with the intent of really showing that it's very difficult to do this in a short amount of time. And so, we are not teeing up many changes for 2025. We're really looking towards 2026. However, in 2025, we do have a revision that we need to address. Periodically, FEMA updates their flood insurance rate maps, and this year, they've updated the Essex County flood map. And so, our floodplain overlay district actually includes the boundaries of that map. So, an updated flood map from FEMA requires us to update our text accordingly to match their new map. And this is an example of a legal or regulatory reason that we would update our zoning code so that it doesn't conflict with federal laws. We are looking at a much more comprehensive list of changes that we will prepare in 2025 for approval in 2026. The comprehensive review, I am anticipating to include technical changes and policy changes. There's some outdated information that we can remove. There's opportunities to clarify language, potentially reorganize for readability, add new sections. This here, by the way, is not an extensive list. This is just a starting list to get us going. And then some of the policy changes that I am thinking we may want to consider, and some of the things that I included here are things that I've heard from my conversations up to this point, and things that other towns, you know, have also been looking at. So, this would kind of keep us in line with what's happening, but design guidelines for commercial districts, commercial parking regulations, commonly included in other zoning bylaws, but we haven't added that in Middleton yet. The cost of living in Massachusetts is increasing. Middleton has to reckon with affordable housing. I think inclusionary zoning bylaws, another thing that many towns have adopted and really could benefit the town. And we also have significant agricultural resources. I've heard that from a lot of folks, and talking about like the prescriptive zoning, when there's a strong sense of place, that's one of those opportunities where that's, you can kind of dig into that and really understand, okay, how is that something we can preserve? How do we want to approach that going forward? So, hopefully, this has gotten some gears turning a little bit. I do want to stress for this process, this is the beginning, we're at the start right now. So, my intention is to hear from you all, collect ideas, and compile sort of a plan to approach each of these topics. So, like I said, each of these topics, we'll have to consider as an amendment, so they'll all have their own process to go through, public hearings, et cetera. And so, we do want to be, you know, thoughtful about how we approach that. Before I close, I want to ask if any of our board chairs have a comments, feedback, or thoughts that they wanted to share from here, and then I have a couple of questions to close this out.
One quick question. It sounds like there's going to be, not in 2025, but 2026, several different topics and several different amendments. I'm assuming we're planning, or it's probably up to the Planning Board, to put these forward individually as separate articles at a town meeting versus packaging them together? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, there may be, the same way that some, the same way that sometimes you can group some that are likely to have, you know, wide support, we might be able to group some of them together, but likely, we'll need to address most of them individually.
So, on the Affordable Housing Trust side, I mean, I think we are, as we continue to implement our strategic plan, I think there's things that we are thinking about that we'd like to make some recommendations. I don't think we're there yet for making recommendations, but recommendations around strategies of increasing affordable housing, whether it's, you know, requirements and new developments, whether it's some type of set aside, or any combination thereof. Myself, you know, the whole northern part of Route 114, which actually is at north, which is what?
West.
Yeah, but I call it north, even though it's called North Main Street. I think that's an area as well that I think the town has a short window to actually make some changes there that would actually be accommodating for opportunities, whether it's for affordable or before the window closes and that entire corridor becomes commercial and industrial buildings with condos, commercial and industrial condos. I mean, there's a large parcel there that has been vacant, that at some point, something's going to be done there. It's either going to be a 40B that's going to drop on the town, or, you know, it may be an opportunity for us to look at zoning, to do something collaborative there that we have more control over than, because if another 40B comes to this town, the likelihood is we're not going to be able to have a developer that's going to be as amenable to doing a friendly process with us. So, but as it relates to affordable, you know, I think, you know, we're going to look at the schedule that you're working on, and I think we're getting closer to some recommendations that we'd like to make, understanding that our board is just a recommendations board in this process. Secondly, I think we talked, it was about a year ago that we actually talked about some of the things that we would like to see happen going forward, and this isn't really a technical change or even a policy change, but it's kind of a little bit of a process change. I think in the future, you're probably going to see, as items are coming through, planning indoor zoning, but most likely planning, you may get some warm, unsolicited advice from the Affordable Housing Trust. Obviously, we're a recommendation body, not a decision-making body, but I think as a committee, we've kind of decided that it's an opportunity for us to start weighing in that process. For example, you know, you've got on here, design guidelines for commercial districts. We have the Commercial Industrial Design Review Committee, but I think there's been some process that has been followed in that committee that may not be tied to a zoning requirement. It's just been a kind of modus operandi. I think we'd just like to get into that process as well as it relates to affordability. So, I don't know if there's anything else from Affordable Housing Trust committee members?
I just had one question on the Housing Production Plan. So, we have the update that's happening this year, but we're still in compliance, right? So, we remain in safe harbor, is that right, folks? Or are we out of compliance, right? Did it expire in '24, or is it expiring?
The Housing Production Plan expired in '24, but our safe harbor right now is based on the issuance of the comprehensive permit.
It is, so we're still in safe harbor?
We're still in safe harbor, because there's different avenues to that safe harbor, so we're good for now. But I know Justin has emphasized that prioritization to Anna, so that we don't, because certainly there's steps with that project that keep us in safe harbor, but this is the underlying.
Understood.
How long do we sit in safe harbor because of the Angelica's property?
Two. Is it two years?
It's two years.
Two years, right?
Two years, but I don't know if I was able to update you yet, that there was a Permit Extension Act recently done that Building Commissioner Fitzpatrick made me aware of, and that may extend, the Permit Extension Act may extend that comprehensive permit's approval for even longer, and so we need to get into what that does to our safe harbor. If the permit is alive longer than its typical life because of the Extension Act, does that safe harbor then follow, or do they still have to hit the same mile markers for safe harbor and their construction timing? And I know Commissioner Fitzpatrick was looking at that.
Okay.
So, you're saying the production, oh, I'm sorry.
You guys are still talking about what you, I got a few things, so keep going on this topic.
So, the Housing Production Plan expired in 2024. So, have you already started work at all on the 2025 to '29 Housing Production Plan? The prior planner, do you start that or not?
So, I'm working on putting together a proposal to bring on a consultant to update that.
Because the last time that it was through, I was on that.
Yeah.
And I think it was in 2000, refresh my memory, 2018 or something like that, and we put that together, and there was citizen involvement, I recall at the time. Is that the same concept, or you're saying a consultant this time?
No, no, it will be the same process. So, likely, a consultant will help with the writing of it, but we'll have a kickoff process, like a kickoff meeting, and plenty of opportunities for open engagement. We haven't kicked off the process yet.
The last time we did not have a consultant, we had the planning director, and a representative from the state came in and spoke. So, the planning director put it together. I'm pretty positive we did not have a consultant on that.
I think MAPC would, the state entity is the consultant.
But he didn't commit, he didn't write any of it. I do recall that. He wasn't a part of writing it. I could be wrong, it's been a while, but I don't recall him helping write it. I could be wrong, though. So, just curious where that is.
Just because Anna wasn't here at the time, that was not, MAPC, when they came in, they do function as a consultant, as they did with the five-year strategic plan for the Affordable Housing Trust. So, you know, there still will likely be some sort of group of volunteers that work directly to inform that plan, and as Anna mentioned, a lot of public engagement about it. But there was professional support, it was not just our planning director.
As I said, I don't, it's been a while, so I don't recall exactly. I mean, 2018, and I don't recall.
Yeah, there was support from MAPC in terms of writing, and the one good thing that the Affordable Housing Trust has done, which pat yourselves on the back, in doing your strategic plan so recently, a lot of the demographic work you just completed, Anna doesn't have to redo for the Housing Production Plan, which is actually great. So, that, it'll be a very similar process to what you recall, but I think we're also very keenly aware of, the comprehensive zoning is so important, we have to do it, and we need to get going for '26, and there's a lot of initiatives that are going to be coming from the Planning Department, so having some extra support in that department of one is going to, I think, be really critical in terms of success. I don't know.
Yeah, so I think all the initiatives you saw on the screen today...
Yeah, so I think all the initiatives you saw on the screen today, you hear oftentimes when people have preference to do things in-house, and I think the reason is sometimes when you bring in a consultant, there's a feeling or a minimum of appearance that their understanding of the community may not be as deep as you'd see from people that actually live in the community. But in an instance like this, and I also wasn't here when you all blasted your housing production plan, but in previous communities I've been in, the typical process was soliciting information and feedback and direction from the community. The planner would help gather that, help write some of the narrative and whatnot, but a consultant, or in this case, it sounds like it was the regional planning group, would actually compile the final document. And so I assume would follow the same process.
Thank you.
May I?
If you want to be.
So from the from the zoning board of appeals, I think this is a great opportunity that we're making adjustments to our zoning bylaw, and it's a it's a collective process here. I mean, we're all here, and we're all to we're all due to do that. Eventually, it'll be the decision of the planning board, but ultimately, it will rest with the zoning board of appeals. We will have to administer the zoning bylaws. And so from from my perspective as the chair, the provisions in our bylaw must be consistent, number one. There can't be ambiguities in our bylaw. We need to, we need to have a bylaw where it does not give us or any future board the opportunity to be arbitrary. Mr. Cruster is okay. Mr. Gregorio, not okay. So so that's really important, to make the job of the ZBA easier, so that we're not looking at each other, asking, what do we do with this? Or gee, well, we did this the last time. Do we do it this time?
If I if I could ask, was some of that, when the the audit was done of the zoning, was some of that looked at in terms of ambiguity? Or was it looked at more technical?
Let me finish going through this, because I think as we go through this, I think it's going to be our job, at least how I understand this process, is to to look at those things. Because there's a few other things. In terms of, you know, sort of arbitrary decisions and those opportunities to make arbitrary decisions, we saw on Anna's slides, there's things from a technical's perspective, right? That should be pretty easy, right? Triggers in a particular filing. Does it trigger a traffic peer review? Does it trigger a traffic study? The whole process of that, right? Standards. And I think, Anna, you had up on one of your slides, that the the bylaws were written during a time, at the time, or however you put it up there, right? This is what we, this is this is how the town is now, so we're writing a bylaw to be consistent with that. Whereas, design standards have changed. How wide should our sidewalks be? Should we require sidewalks? How wide should our roadway width be? What should be the construction of a roadway? How should that be? All of those standards, so that so when somebody's coming in and they say, oh, well, we're going to do, and this is probably more in the planning board, we're going to put a new subdivision road in. Well, there's no, there's no discussion about it. Our roadway subdivision is eight inches of gravel, with three inches of binder and two inches of top, or whatever it might be, right? So that we're not looking at each other, trying to figure it out, because we know that when the applicants come in with their engineers and their lawyers and everybody else, they're working on behalf of the applicant. And that's okay. We want projects to be successful. And if you've been to any of the ZBA meetings, particularly when we're talking about traffic, we want the project to be successful, but not on the back of a Middleton resident who's trying to get to work in the morning, and now they can't because they're stuck in traffic. And that's just one example. So I think this is a great opportunity to go through all of this and just to make the ZBA's job easier, not just the current ZBA, but future ZBA's. So that we're not trying to figure it out and listening to some slick, I don't mean to be, I don't want to degrade anybody, slick lawyers or engineers that come in, and Bill and I are on the engineering side, so they're just kind of trying to get their point across, and they'll, 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 they'll talk us off the ledge. We want to make that easier. So so that's how I see this process, and I'm delighted that we're actually doing this. And I think as we go through it, it'll allow us to then refine these things. So don't get me wrong, there's always going to be some things that are judgment calls, right? Especially with the zoning board of appeals. But I think to the extent we can, we can make those better. So Brian, you said the last time that it was.
No, my question was, the audit that was done of the zoning bylaws, was there, was part of that audit looking at those areas of either ambiguity, or is the recommendation from the audit came back and said, you should have specific parameters around A, B, and C, for example?
There are some specific recommendations in the audit. I didn't pull them off for today because they are very specific, including like exactly the section, exactly, but, you know, exactly the text that they would want to see. And so I am expecting that we will take a look at all of those again to make sure that they are still kind of on our path forward. But a lot of them did look at ambiguity, definitely inconsistencies between text, and definitely inconsistencies with Massachusetts case law.
I'd defer to my colleague here, Bill, as well. Anything you want to add?
Not really. I've already sent a few comments to Anna, so she knows kind of what I'm thinking. But I mean, there's definitely some stuff that's antiquated, there's definitely some stuff that really constrains how projects are developed in town. So I mean, those are the, for me, would be the main highlights. So, you know, obviously, parking's a biggie. There's a bunch of stuff, uses that we don't even have in the code, for example. And we got some other stuff where, you know, basically, anything in the industrial district and like North Main Street, that whole area, every project has to be offset from, you know, the lot line, and all the parking has to be in front for you to be able to build it. It's really just, you know, impact what what the developments end up looking like. And, you know, I think that we could do that a lot better in town, too. So just a couple of things on that end.
I just want to say, I was on that bylaw review committee in 2018, and we addressed tons of things like that, to make them more specific, more direct, less ambiguity, more structured, what the subdivision's supposed to look like, how big sidewalks are, if there's going to be a sidewalk. We did, we went through each and everything, and we also comprised things over there, and we brought it together. So I, it was months worth of work.
I bet.
And and we did exactly what you are suggesting. We started that process anyway at that time.
Cool. Awesome.
And I know we're going to get more in the weeds as we dig into each individual topic, but one thing that, you know, I heard, I forget where it came from, but we were talking about subdivisions, private roads versus public roads, and having potentially a separate color street sign, so that when someone comes into a new subdivision, they're looking to buy a property, they can see, okay, what is that new, what is that different color street sign mean? Means it's a private way. Means that they are, the homeowners in that association are on that roadway, responsible for the maintenance, plowing, everything on that road.
Yeah, because that's a constant comment when somebody moves in, purchased their home, and then files out.
So I want to add.
I think that's a good example of something that we definitely want to see.
So so something I want to add to that, when I talk about standards, right? I mean, the traffic engineering business, the federal law, the manual on traffic, uniform traffic, even things about street signs on public or private ways, right? So there are only certain colors that can be used, font size, font style, all of those sorts of things. So while maybe we want a different color, we'd have to say, okay, we want to make sure it's still compliant. Same thing with any type of regulatory sign, all of those things. So and that's just one little thing of a much bigger picture. But as we go through this, some of those things, we also want to make sure that we're not putting something in our bylaw that allows something, someone to do something that's not compliant.
Yeah.
With with law, right? So those kind of things.
For sure.
I want to just give a minute, too, with anyone who hasn't had a chance to respond or questions. We have a couple of minutes left. The last thing I had was just some questions we don't need to answer now, but things for you to please take the slides home with you. And I'm available if you have thoughts, if you have something, come to you, give me a call, send me an email. This is, like I said, the beginning of the conversation. But if any others have questions or comments now, we have a couple more minutes.
So are you envisioning reconvening this group a few times? Is that kind of a thought? Or is this just kind of highlighting to us, and then each different board will kind of chime in based on their?
In, yeah, it's kind of in my my perfect process. So whether that happens or not, I would really like to put together a schedule of exactly what we are going to look at when and publicize those meeting dates. Probably the board that has the most.
Jurisdiction.
Right, exactly, would host the meeting, but I would I would publicize them to anyone who wanted to attend.
Cool.
Very good.
I dig it.
Anyone else before we adjourn?
So are we going to, you, do you want to put a, you're going to put a timeline together? Like?
Yeah, like, that's my plan, like a schedule of the year with, you know, when we're going to look at which topic. First, I'm making a list of topics, and then I'll put them in kind of a schedule.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Very good. Hearing nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the joint meeting. We're going to take a five brief, five or so minute brief recess before we start up Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting here at the Fuller Middle School, Wednesday, January 8th, 2025, 143 South Main Street. All meetings of the planning board have been, are being digitally and audio recorded to the public in our gigantic audience that stuck around after our last joint session.
A little sarcasm.
So want to thank the members of the ZBA, the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Master Plan Committee for joining us previously to kind of go over the comprehensive bylaw changes that we're going to be considering in 2025, mostly in 2026. That said, first on the agenda for the regular planning board meeting is the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes to review. Has everyone had a chance to review the October 24th, 2024 minutes? And if so, I will consider any motions.
I'll make a motion to accept the October 24th, 2024 minutes.
Do we have a second?
Yep, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, to review and approve minutes from the November 13th, 2024 meeting, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings from November 13th, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, meetings from our November 20th, 2024 hearing, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting from November, the meeting minutes from November 20th, 2024.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a ZBA recommendation for 63 Maple Street. It's a single-family residential addition and renovation on a non-conforming lot. Do we have anyone from the petitioner here? We do not. Anna, when did this one come in? Do you know who's?
This came in at the end of December.
Okay.
And I can give you a quick summary, if that's helpful?
Yeah, I think that would be, that'd be great.
Sure. So it's a single-family home. They are looking to do a residential addition and renovation. The reason they are coming to the zoning board and therefore the planning board is because it's a non-conforming lot. So the lot size is smaller than what's established in the district, and also, they are a little bit short on their front setback. The proposed changes that they're going to make, they're not changing the lot at all, so the lot size will continue to be non-conforming. The the addition will reduce the front setback by two additional feet, and all the other lot requirements are in compliance with the district. They they also have, so they're increasing the number of bedrooms from, I believe, two to four bedrooms. They have already applied for and completed a new septic system on the property to prepare for the increase in bedrooms. And they have provided a stormwater management plan. I, excuse me, I uploaded that to the drive, if if y'all would like to look over it.
And part of this is adding a second story as well, right?
Correct.
The septic system is designed for a four-bedroom house?
It is.
Yeah, they've already done the septic system, correct? Yeah.
I think that's the house across from the church. It's done, that's done work, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's really just a, the setback by two feet, really, is what's what's in question?
And it's really a straight linear line from the front of the house to the, to Maple Street, so it's not really going to be too noticeable.
Yeah, it's just, it's just going closer to Pinedale. It's only, it's only going to Pinedale Road.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like it's going to another, it's not like it's going right next to another house, it's going right to Pinedale.
Yeah, it's not encroaching on a lot line of a neighbor or anything like that.
And the same thing in the back, because that's the back, that's the backside of King Street, leaning back up on the other side of it.
And this did go out to all the abutters? We hadn't received any comments or feedback from any abutters regarding the?
So the first hearing for this is scheduled for the ZBA on January 23rd.
Okay.
So the abutters notices, I just sent them out today.
Gotcha.
So once they receive them, they're welcome to show up to the ZBA meeting.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Very good. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation of approval to the ZBA without any specific conditions.
Very good. Do we have a second? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The applicant for Stu, to Stevens Ave, it's a single-family residence, interior demo, renovation, and addition on a non-conforming lot. They have not gotten the application finalized and over to us, so we are not going to be hearing that one today. Most likely, that will be on our February meeting. Relevant updates on Mass General Law Chapter 43A, multi-family zoning if needed. Big news today from the Supreme Court justices, they ruled that it is constitutional. There was a technicality on a procedural issue that impacts the guidelines. I have, I'd be lying if I told you I knew what the timeline would be for them to redo all of the hearings necessary to go through the proper channels that those guidelines needed to filter through before becoming law. And I don't know, I think we've, we're waiting still on legal counsel to give us their input on it. Needless to say, it's, it's not going to go away. So just because we voted no, I don't think it's something that we want to be reactive to. I think it's something we probably should look at each month, any developments either from the state, whether or not we want to be more proactive or reactive, and what type of involvement we want to have. So do we want to try and reach out to the EOHLC in advance of, you know, potentially getting smacked with a lawsuit by saying a couple of things that I mentioned to Anna, you know, we're not considered a small town, unlike Boxford and Topsfield. Additionally, when you look at the map, we're one of, I believe, only two towns that don't abut a, one of those blue areas that are either directly connected to mass transit or directly MBTA adjacent. So I think there's some So, I think there's some unique factors, you know, for Middleton, that maybe they would reconsider our status to a small town. And I don't know what, Anna, I don't know if you had a chance to run those calculations, what would that do for our 50-acre, 750-unit guideline?
I didn't have a chance to look on, like, at specific, specifically at some of the parcels. The main differences between the classification of an adjacent community and a small town is that the adjacent community has that 50-acre minimum, and the small town doesn't have a minimum acreage. And then, the percentage of overall, like, the percentage of your total housing units is also, that's like the other difference there. So, an adjacent community is required to meet the 10% of housing units to, sorry, let me be a little bit clearer about that. In determining the total, how many units totally would be in the district, that that is at 10% of the overall units in the community for an adjacent, or an adjacent community, for an adjacent small town, that's at 5%. So, those would be where it's different. The density, 15 units per acre, doesn't change, that's the same for all communities.
So, if I understand correctly, we would be down from 750 at 10% to now 5%, so we're looking at 375 units?
So, actually, the 750 calculation for Middleton is based on 50 units times 50, the density of 15 units per acre.
Oh, gotcha.
50 times, yeah, so that's where that calculation is from. I don't have our total, I'm sorry, I should have it in front of me, but I don't have our total housing units in the community in front of me right now, but that would be where the 5% is from if, for a different classification.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know, in all likelihood, whether the state would even entertain that, but I think, should we get hit with a lawsuit and go to court, I think it looked, would look beneficial on the town of Middleton, that we were trying to be proactive in trying to open communication to avoid litigation. Whether it's successful or not, you know, who knows? But, you know, to go in front of a court and say, "Look, we tried to open the lines of communication, here's one thing that we suggested, you know, looking at the classification of the town." Like I said, everything that is an adjacent community seems to be, other than North Bridge, seems to be directly connected or directly bordered to a rapid transit or commuter rail community. So, if that's something the board agrees with, I'm happy to work on potentially like a draft letter to the EO HLC that would be a planning board letter, saying, "We'd like to open the lines of communication with you to potentially avoid a lawsuit." Maybe this is one of the strategies that we go for, maybe we look at a different strategy, but I think at least trying to get that open line of communication prior to litigation would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with opening the lines of communication. You know, I think we should look at a reclassification.
Absolutely.
Right? I mean, it just doesn't, to me, it doesn't make any sense, you know, we're responsible for 750 units, and then you have Boxford, Topsfield, I think Topsfield is 120, 115, something like that. It just, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah. I agree.
And rather than just a hard no, it's, you know, hey, you know, consider this.
Right. So, if that's something the board is interested in, I'm happy to try and work on a draft letter to the EO HLC. I put some notes in there already, talking about, you know, the fact that this has gone to town meeting twice, that both times, the town disagreed with, you know, the potential bylaw that would comply with this. I'm happy to draft the letter for our, you know, for review, and then we can decide next month whether that's something we want to go out or not.
Sounds good.
I do think it will be wise to hear from town council about the decision today and how that might impact us.
Correct.
Yeah, definitely interested in the timeline as far as, you know, when he thinks potential future litigation might go out.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like, just with the ruling today, that there's still a process, you know, like you said, Anthony, so it's, you know, there's a hearing that needs to take place, you know, the public has to be involved, so, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things that still need to take place, and that could, you know, that could be six months, nine months.
That could be a year.
Could be, could be a long time.
Exactly.
I mean, by the time they start coming after communities, that's really kicking the ball down the field, because, to be honest, they've got to figure it out for themselves first, before they start implementing anything on us.
The other...
I mean, that was quite clear, and...
What I hope not to see, and I've heard rumors of it, is that the, our favorite governor is going to put forward an emergency declaration, in which case, she would make this like an emergency mandate, and not a, not go through, not try and avoid going through the process, which is not going to look good on her, given all the negative feedbacks. Like, I'm hopeful that she won't do that, knowing that there is several communities that are not in favor of this to begin with. But we'll see.
We'll see.
Yeah. I mean, the way I look at it, like, Milton is a MBTA community, right? They have, you know, they have the MBTA right there, right? Where, and that was a decision, you know, today, and, you know, we don't have that, you know, we're, you know, we're not even close to that, so...
Yeah. Agreed.
And the other thing, just to reiterate, we have septic. So, we're also, we have to conform to what our septic systems will allow in those areas.
Septic and, septic and well water.
That's right. So, we can't do exactly what they've blanketed out. So, be logical about this.
Yeah.
It just can't be done.
There's a lot of things that don't apply to us, right?
Right. So, you know...
No, that's true.
And ultimately, I think, you know, the state wants it to be zoned equal to what production was. What we had always tried to accomplish was limit, zone it in a place that you wouldn't see production equal what the zoning is. If it's a more palatable piece of legislation, maybe we do zone it for a specific area that does get the production that they're looking for. That's another way that we could potentially approach it, is if they came with us, came to us with a more fair expectation for Middleton, that we might be more likely to actually follow through and have developers that are willing to build what they want, rather than, you know, at a reasonable number, not at an unreasonable expectation. Right?
Okay.
Cool. So, we'll put that on there for next month, Anna?
Yeah.
Items not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance. The only thing that I know of is, I want to thank Lisa for her participation, her hard work, her effort, you know, serving on this board. I know you mentioned that you do not plan to pull reelection papers for this coming term, so thank you again, I do appreciate it. Dave is an alternate, love for you to join us in pull papers. That would leave, if Dave, you know, is elected as a permanent board member, we would have two alternate positions, so we still have room on the board, for anyone listening, anyone out there.
We do, we do have applications that have been...
Put in the talent bank?
I believe, yeah, haven't we?
Yes. Yeah. I'll reach out to Eileen and see how quickly we can get them in front of a, or get applications in front of us that we can make a recommendation at, for appointment at a select board meeting.
Yeah, because as, you know, as I was saying earlier, it's like, there's going to be more and more put on us with everything that's going on, and, you know, we've had a hard time filling the quorum, so...
Yeah, agreed. If you have, if you have any talent bank applications, maybe we can add that for next month's agenda, to review any talent bank applications and...
What is, so what is the process? I think when, when I had to do it, it was, you know, I pulled the papers, and I had to go before the select board and the planning board, is that what it was? Or was that just a joint meeting at that time?
It's a joint meeting between the planning board and the select board. So, we would review the applications and say, "Inimini, manimo."
Yep.
Pick whoever we think is most qualified and would be best suited to help the board, and then we go to the select board with our appointment recommendation, and the select board would either approve or deny it.
And in my case, it was just me, so...
Yeah. Anyone else have anything for us, for Anna? I believe so. Cool. Very good. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.